Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November 12th meeting, special meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a recall?
Councilmember Rotman, Garpetian.
Here.
Kasaki, Najarian.
Here.
And Mayor Asadran.
Here. And may we have your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, November 12, 2024, special public meeting of the city council is posted on November 7, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right, and what's next?
Number one is community development, public hearing for Stage One preliminary design review case number PDR-002693-2023 to construct a new 105-unit, eight-story multifamily building with 215 parking spaces and public open space area on the 36,170 square foot site located at 820 North Central Avenue, 208 Arden Avenue, and 212 Arden Avenue in DSP zone. A motion to approve Stage One preliminary design and review.
All right, Mr. Calvert.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. We'll go straight to our senior planner, Aline Babakani, and she will give you a short presentation on the project.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, members of city council, members of public and staff. This case is a Stage One preliminary design review with the case number PDR-002693-2023 for the project addressed as 820 North Central Avenue. At the Stage One preliminary design review application consists of the demolition of an existing 5,688 square-foot commercial building, which is an existing vacant restaurant and two surface parking lots. In order to construct a new 105 residential units with the floor area of 129,640 square feet, the building will be eight-story, will be multifamily residential building with three levels of subterranean parking garages and at-ground parking as well to include a total of 215 parking spaces. The project is required to provide a total of minimum 183 parking spaces. The project includes a 3,345 square-foot publicly accessible open space and a total of 15,183 square-foot outdoor space for the use of the future building residents. The project also includes one, the project includes one studio unit 37, one-bedroom unit 61, two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units. The project site includes three adjacent lots addressed as 820 North Central Avenue, 208 Arden Avenue, and 212 Arden Avenue. The project site is 36,170 square feet in area, and it is located at the southeast corner of Central and Arden Avenue in the downtown specific plan getaway district zone. On this slide, you can see the existing condition of the site, view from Arden Avenue and view from Central Avenue. The surrounding adjacent zoning includes DSP on the north, south, and east side of the project site and C2 on the west side across Central Avenue. The properties surrounding the site includes one-story restaurant, surface parking lot, and 19-story hotel to the north side of the project site across Arden Avenue, a 30-story hotel immediately adjacent to the project site to the south, and a five-story parking structure immediately adjacent to the east side of the project site. The proposed building is rectangular in design and occupies the entire building site. The project is providing 30 parking spaces on the ground floor and a total of 185 parking spaces within the proposed three levels of subterranean parking garages. Vehicular access to the parking area is provided from Arden Avenue. The project complies with the building setback requirements of the DSP standards, which requires a minimum of 18-foot setback from Central Avenue and Arden Avenue, which will be five-foot parkway, 10-foot sidewalk, and three-foot building adjacent zone. The proposed project is 91 feet in height, and the FAR or floor area ratio is 3.6, which complies with the height, with the FAR and height requirement for the getaway district in the downtown specific plan area. As you can see on this chart, the maximum allowed height by right in this area is 275 feet for the building height, and the maximum allowed FAR is 7.25. This is by right. For the DSP objective design standards applicable to this project, the project provides the required publicly accessible open space within the proposed plaza or courtyard area located adjacent to Central Avenue in the southwest portion of the site. You can see on this slide labeled as publicly accessible open space. This 3,345 square-foot publicly accessible open space is 100% open-to-sky, oriented towards the, an access from a public street, and integrated well within the site planning of the project. The programming of this, the programming of this area will be viewed during the Stage Two design review application. For the residential development open space, the project is required to provide 14,700 square-foot open space, and it is providing a total of 15,183 square feet. The residential development open space is provided in the form of private residential balconies and also a pool deck at the second floor of the building. For the mass and scale of the project, out of four available options in the DSP standards to comply with, the project chose to create a corner feature at the intersection of Central Avenue and Arden Avenue. The corner feature, as is required by the standards, is differentiated by height and design feature from the primary massing of the building. As required, the project features a visible and delineated roof line at the building facades by creating roof line setbacks, proposing different material and colors, canopies, and also landscaping planters along balconies at the upper levels. The project also has incorporated the major and minor facade modulations as required by the DSP standards. Also, the project provides visual interest at the pedestrian level by building facades featuring architectural details, articulation, various colors and materials, and different window patterns. Also, the project additionally creates modulation by creating a clearly defined building base, middle, and top on the facades of this building. Therefore, the proposed project, which is designed in contemporary style, is consistent with the DSP design standards in its features, high-quality and varied building materials, varied colors and textures, as I mentioned, recessed and visible entrances, recessed balconies, uniform and divided large windows and canopies. These features create a design that is unique while recognizing the priorities of the DSP to promote pedestrian activities and create human-scale architectural elements, particularly at the ground level. Details of some features, such as details for ground-level entry details, penetration, garage entries and gates, location of utilities, lighting, and the mixed-use commercial street requirements, improvement to the public right-of-way and programming for the residential open space will be reviewed and finalized during the Stage Two final design review application. Also, environmental review is not required for Stage One design review. The environmental review will be prepared and presented to the council at the Stage Two design review. With this, staff recommends that city council approve the Stage One preliminary design review application for this project. And with that, I conclude my presentation.
Thank you. I'm also required to open up the hearing. So, opening up the hearing at 3:12? Do my colleagues have any questions at this time?
Question. In terms of the inclusionary housing, I'm not sure if you addressed that. It's what, 15%?
There is no proposed inclusionary housing.
Okay, isn't that required?
So it would be required either that they build it onsite or pay a fee? I'm not sure. Because it's Stage One, they probably haven't chosen which route they're going to take.
Were it to be included in the property, it would be 15% of the...
15% of the number of units.
Of the, how many units do we have here?
Hundred and five.
Hundred and five.
Hundred.
So about 15, 15, if they chose to do it onsite. Okay. And this is a rental property, right? As far as you know, of course, that's a decision.
Yeah, that would be probably from the applicant to answer that question. There is no density bonus proposal for this project.
Can I ask a question of the developer? Maybe Rodney?
Do you want to wait till their presentation?
Oh, you have a presentation coming?
Yes.
Okay, well, in your presentation, please address the question of what would it take to make this an ownership property as opposed to rental?
Welcome. How long do you need?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
How long do you need?
A total of five minutes.
Okay.
Very brief. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rodney Khan. My offices are here in the city of Glendale. A few brief comments, then I'll turn it over to our architect, who will also make a few brief comments. The, a couple of the questions that were asked is, is this a rental or ownership? It is a rental, and I'll expand on the ownership part of it in a little bit. The, the site itself, as you know, it's 105 units we're proposing. It's in the gateway district of the downtown specific plan, and that's an area of our city where high-density residential developments should be built. The site's been sitting vacant for the past four years. Our project will be a welcome addition to the businesses in the area, adding to the mix of hotels, office buildings, and restaurants. We are a fully code-compliant project. We comply with all the rules, the regulations of the Glendale Municipal Code, and also the updates to the downtown specific plan. And this project will help the city's regional housing needs assessment or arena numbers. We know we need significantly more housing in our community. To address Councilmember Najarian's comments, right now, off, off the cuff, so to speak, I couldn't speak to what it will take for this project to be a condominium. We'd have to go back and analyze it in terms of the costs, the construction costs, the insurances that are involved. All those different types of items would need to be evaluated. So right now, I would say I'd need to come back at a later date to really give you a good answer on that question. I told you I'd be brief, so I'm going to conclude my remarks. I'm going to turn it over to our architect, and he'll give you a brief presentation as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ron Mondalian. I represent the urban design specialist. Thank you for another opportunity to present our project. I'll try to be very brief. I lean covered in very detailed everything, so I'll just run through it, and I'm here to answer any questions you have. Oh, this is the end of it, okay. Okay, so really briefly, the logic...
We saw it all.
The logic of building form created by our adjacencies, we have 13-story hotel building to the south and a five-level parking structure to the east. So we placed our open space as a buffer. It's about 55 feet in width to give more light to our units and not to shadow the hotel. So that's why we placed open space where it is. Let's start with the public open space accessible, and we, in overall, we exceed about 20% of what's required in total for the open space. Our public open space accessible from Central, and it flows into the, like you can see here on the ground level, it flows into a private open space above. So together, even though on different level, it's in same location, so visually, it's one big open space. The balance, the rest of the open space is in private balconies and roof decks and terraces. You can also see here that the top floor, which is the lower level, is pushed back to minimize the view, the massing, but I'll get to it separately. Briefly on a program, this is a typical subterranean-level garage with plenty of residential storage. Our ground level, we have a large common open space. Right now, it's about 2,500, 2,600 square feet. We have a lobby both facing Central. We have a cornerly-spaced fitness center for residents and other amenities facing Arden. This is our second floor, open to the, our common open space, the pool deck. And the rest of the floors are pretty much in this configuration overall. This is the top level. Again, you can see it's the, it's floor, eighth floor is additionally stepped back to minimize the massing from the street roof deck, I mean roof, non-habitable roof. This is just a quick massing to, you can visualize the overall scale of our project. We went through this modulation roof line with good here, okay. This shows better. You can see the base, middle, and the top portion. In addition, eighth floor is pulled back. Elevations, you can see the adjacencies. You can see the, in scale, the height of the, to the left, the height of the garage structures. The units to the east are facing Arden and the courtyards, so there's no windows directly to that parking structure. This is the hotel. Looking from the back, you can see the height of it. Hotel additionally steps back, so there's a really nice buffer from that tall building. You can see it here, too. Materials, all high-quality. We have Nishi fiber cement panels. We have different types of metal trims. We have a glass railing, and we have some stucco. Landscape, the, there's a lot of amenities in a common open space, including, like if you see that curve, it's a cast-in-place permanent bench that ends into a water feature. This is all open to public. There's also decorative pavement on the Arden site. This is the sitting areas on both sides landscaped. So we'll talk about program more, but we've developed it to this point. You can see that curved bench over there. You can see pebble seating that is facing the Arden. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do. Do you see any unusual difficulties constructing subterranean next to the existing parking garage to your east?
Not necessarily. As long as we go deep enough, there's a 45-degree line from the bottom of the footing of the adjacent structure into our, towards our site. As long as we pass that and go down, so we don't, we, we're going to, it's going to be designed to take a surcharge from the building, of course, but that's the only challenge. There will be shoring.
Okay. Many years ago, a developer who was looking at that lot expressed some concern, and I didn't get into it much deeper, but I just want to make sure that you've taken that into consideration and are figuring it out.
Nice project. So the pool area is adjacent to the hotel side, right?
Yes.
And what is, it's a big setback. It's like 55-feet setbacks. That's good, because the windows are not facing each other.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Can you tell me a little bit on, about the corner, corner element that was mentioned in the, is it on the corner of Central and Arden? They said there's a corner element in the design. I think it's Central and...
Arden.
Arden.
Arden, yeah. That's the one?
That corner is a fitness center.
Okay.
Which will be attractive for people who will want to live there. It's, it's a sizable fitness center.
But that's only for, for the residents?
For residents only, yes.
Now, I was talking about the architectural element on that corner. It was mentioned in our report that there's an, like an architectural element.
Well, that element is not much different than this corner element. It's protruded, it's undulated. We're using high-end Nishi panels on both corners with some integrated lighting. The elements in between will be sheet metal. Also, the entire ground level is natural stone at the pedestrian level, framed by metal belt that repeats throughout the project.
Right.
And we also have canopies on a, on a, on a ground level.
Okay. I think this is for, thank you. I don't think I have any other questions from you. By my, my memory serves me right, you're the one who designed the, you had a project on Kenwood or?
Kenwood, and then we did one in Doron that's built right down next to the hotel.
You're, you're the same architect, right?
Yes, last time I was with you.
Yeah, I can see some of the similarities in design. Okay, thank you. I don't have any questions from the architect at this time.
I, okay, well, I have two questions. As you're walking down Central, it kind of feels like a lot of concrete. Is there an opportunity to shift the building to be able to have that open space on Central versus on Arden?
Go to the floor plan, just to understand the question.
So the, the accessible, publicly accessible open space, you were, you were speaking to it as an, it's on Arden, right?
Yes, yeah. So from Central, we have that large public opening.
Right.
Public open space facing Central, and then we gave a little bit relief on Arden, and we did that because Arden turns.
Right.
And we stepped our building to reflect the curvature of the street.
Okay, and then anything that's related to the open space, Mr. Calvert, is in second phase?
Mayor and councilmembers, right now, they're just showing kind of the location of it. Greater design detail would be provided in the Stage Two. So if there's feedback the council would like to give right now, this, this would be a good time to do it, so they can incorporate that or consider it. Yes, the full detail would be revealed in the second phase, second stage.
The only comment on that I would have is for it to be a usable public space versus, some of these buildings look like they, you know, they have, it's supposed to be publicly accessible, but when you're walking by them as a member of the public, if I didn't know, I wouldn't, if I didn't specifically know, it doesn't look like it's publicly accessible and usable. So I think that would be my only comment to the public space. I absolutely love the design. I don't have any other questions or comments on that.
I'd like to, if you don't mind, just show you where we got to, to the point so far. It's, it's obviously being developed, open space. I'll just show you what our landscape designer did and give a little flavor of it. There is, what we've done, we did create a water feature, which is that little dot in the, at the end of that curvature. That curve that you see, that's a building cast-in-place concrete seating. And there will be also a lot of tables and a lot of landscape. So it's, it's in a way a little park, completely open. There's no gates or anything. It will be, it's even the pattern of the pavement in direction, so invite public to it. So that's that portion. As, it has to do, the smaller portion on Arden, we have integrated seating, which is, I like, because that's what, you can see those white pebbles next to the bench. Those are large cast seating areas facing the Arden. Those are the, you can see that little, not here, that little, where the decorative porcelain pavement is there, they're placed all around there. And of course, it's all heavily landscaped, and this is a little bit flavor of how the whole thing going to be. That little sphere, that's the acrylic sphere in a water feature on a public open space. And below is all the benches that's going to go there. And that's some of the pavement ideas.
Okay. I think even this past weekend, I was like walking down Brand and some of the corporate buildings, for example, that have that, you know, what's called a publicly accessible space, they have these giant planters that are around it, right? And so when I was walking by them, it looks pretty, right? Like you can see that there's benches and stuff to sit, but, you know, unless I was where I am knowing, like I wouldn't know that I can go sit there. I would think that I'm going to get kicked out if I go. So what I'm trying to get at is whatever the design ends up being, and I think that's kind of a larger conversation I want to have with staff with about these spaces, about putting up signs that they are for public use as well, just to clear misconceptions there may be. But that's all I would ask.
Thank you.
Mayor and council?
Splash pad? A water slide, a splash pad?
You can do that. Can do a doggy park, dude, that's so popular today.
Mayor and councilmembers, some of the things that you referenced there were part of the old downtown specific plan. Back in 2019, we updated the requirements for public open space that actually prohibits some of those things that you probably encounter now that do make the space feel as if it's not welcome to the general public. A lot of that has been weeded out already in our design standards, and what they propose here does reflect those new requirements.
Okay.
But they're going to be able to secure the place at night, right? It's like dusk to dawn or?
We don't have requirements or really allowance for securing the space at night. They are implied and intended through the code that is used by the general public from dusk to dawn. That is a requirement. I do, Mayor, you had mentioned something about signage. That is something that we have considered and explored previously and something that we are looking at potentially incorporating.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. I have some comments.
Oh, you do? Okay.
For staff, not, not for you.
Thank you, sir.
I think one, one thing that we need to consider when projects come in in general is the, the commercial component of it, the retail portion of it, because when you say mixed-use project, you have to have some retail component, especially on Central. Otherwise, when you walk down, you know, from the freeway, when you walk down south, most of these buildings, they don't have anything attractive or, I don't want to say it, anything that makes it more pedestrian-friendly as far as these buildings go, except maybe a small restaurant or what have you. But I think, I, I know that there are projects coming that are very large and, and they have very small, very small retail component to it. And mixed-use project has to be a true mixed use of, of different uses. As far as this project goes, I, I really like this project, and I'm going to go through my few pages and, not in particular order, and tell you why I like them, because this project is not choked up like many of the projects that we see these days. They use SB 1818, 2097, 85% increase in density and height and everything else. But this project is 105 residential units, when it could have been 207 by law, by code, or with like 250 units an acre. The height could have been 275 with incentives to 380. It's 95. The maximum FAR could have been 7.5 with, with incentives is 3.6. six. I'm, I'm saying these things for, to set the, set some sort of a standard for rest of the developments that are coming, that yes, you can do a little bit, a moderate project that is successful as well. It doesn't have to be really cramped up. As far as parking goes, it has two hundred and fifteen parking spaces total, which with today's codes, you know, the projects can come in, and so we don't want to provide any. And I appreciate that people provide parking, because no matter what people say, everybody has at least one car, and this project is providing more than one parking space. The balconies are not over projecting or overhanging over the, over the public right-of-way, which is a, which is a plus. The open space, the private open space and common open space, they are more than required, like open space for project sixty-six hundred square feet, twelve thousand is provided. And outdoor lounges, wrote some notes. Couple of, couple of things to think about for when, when you guys come back. One is the art piece. I don't know if you want to incorporate an art piece over there, or, or you're going to pay the in-lugue fee for it. Also, as Councilmember Najarian mentioned, the fifteen percent inclusionary housing law that we have. Again, I, I like the project. I think, I think this is a good example of a successful project that is not really choked up. And as far as the condominiums, I'm, I'm a big advocate of ownership housing. We all know the challenges. The biggest challenge is the, the insurance, not only the insurance, the deductible that comes with it. Sometimes your insurance is a million dollars, but your deductible is nine hundred thousand dollars. So as, as elected officials, I think now that the general elections are over, we have to lobby our legislatures in, in Sacramento to come up with a new law, so it could ease up the insurance part of the condominium projects. There are so many projects that could, conversion projects that is not happening just because of the insurance, so, and liabilities. So with that, I think this is a great project. I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian?
I'm in favor of it. I approve the Stage One Design Presentation.
All right. I already made my comments. Thank you. If I could, I would have you build up to thirty, thirty stories and then have the rest of it be a park with a slide, but here we are. So you have my support. Could we have roll call?
Councilmember Rotman? Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
We made a motion, no one... I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call. Oh, I'm closing the hearing. Roll call.
Councilmember Rotman? Carpetian?
Yes.
Kasakian? Najarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Asadri.
Yes. What's next? Thank you.
I would like staff to come back, Bradley, and perhaps working with some of the private representatives, and explain to us if there's anything this city, what the city can do to encourage homeownership. And I would love to have seen this building be designed as a condo, but I know there's issues. If we could get a briefing on, on that, either informally or, you know, I don't want to go through the whole new business, all that other stuff, but let us know. Mr. Carpetian raised some of them, the liability issues. Give us a, help us out and see if there's anything we can do as a council to encourage homeownership.
Please, as the mayor and council, we can submit a memo with some information on that, but I will say that what Councilmember Carpetian stated there is largely the issue. It will be lobbying state to, to make these changes and requirements, but we'll get a memo over with what the current standards are, and then, you know, maybe some options on what we can do.
Councilwoman Najarian, the Glendale Realtors Association also paid for a hefty study on this and has some recommendations. I know that they were going to be reaching out to staff and do a presentation, so I think that's it, right?
Second.
Okay. And then we don't have...
We have a closed session.
We don't have a closed session, right?